Good evening and welcome to the June 20th meeting of the Aiken City Council. I appreciate you being here tonight. We're gonna start with an invocation and then a pledge which will be led by Councilman Duarte. Bradford, invocation. Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this time, for this time that you've given us, this appointed hour that we come together to attend to the business of our city. We ask that your blessings would be upon us, we ask that everything that would be said and done here, Lord, would be pleasing in a manner that represents what we know that you'd want us to represent. We ask this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, just to briefly go over the guidelines of our meeting tonight. Meetings are a public forum in which many opinions are expressed and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, disciplined, honorable, and professional decorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is expected. During public hearings, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chair. If you wish to speak, raise your hand and I will certainly recognize you. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. And in order to allow opportunity for everyone who wishes to address council, speakers should limit their comments to the subject being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue and may only address an issue once unless questions from council are posed to the speaker. And moving down the agenda under old business, for further consideration, number one is a second reading of public hearing of an ordinance establishing a vehicle maintenance fee for the city of Aiken by title and ordinance amending the Aiken City Code to establish the road maintenance fee. Is there a motion?
Before we start, Mr. Mayor, I do, I have asked the city manager, Assistant City Manager, to have the environmental officer come at the end of the meeting and talk about the environmental conditions of the used as property, so we just need to add that to the agenda. Excuse the interruption.
No, that's fine, since there's no action, I guess so.
No, no action, just information, but they want the public to know.
Thank you for that, we'll add that as information at the end of the agenda. Thank you. So to restate this, this is an ordinance amending the Aiken City Code to establish the road maintenance fee. Is there a motion?
I assume so.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second? Comments or stand?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and through you to the members of our city council. Over the past year, we have had many discussions and meetings regarding Aiken's neglected infrastructure includes our roads system. As a matter of fact, when I was interviewed for this job, our infrastructure was highlighted as a major area of weakness and neglect, a major area that needed immediate attention. And then last fall, during the race for mayor, infrastructure was listed as one of the important issues that needed to be addressed. With the election of our new mayor and the drafting of a new city council strategic plan, you identified the need to address infrastructure as one of our collective highest priorities. In the area of roads presently, we have no long-range, consistent, and thoughtful plan to maintain them. We have used CPST funds from time to time, but have never implemented a pavement management system, just a sporadic repaving program. We know that that is both costly and inefficient. We most recently had a presentation by Mr. Rick Tool, professional engineer who was present this evening, who presented to us a comprehensive pavement management system for our consideration. With more than 80,000 systems of government in this country, putting together a roads program is neither a unique or a complicated issue. The pavement management system envisioned represents national standards and best practices for municipal roads programs around the country. We are prepared, once again, for the third time, to both discuss the need for and/or the components of our comprehensive road programs this evening. As I said, Mr. Tool is here and prepared to address that issue once again. But most of the questions and concerns raised by our citizens over the past few months dealt not with the need for a roads or an infrastructure program, or questions about what the components of either are, but for the funding mechanism to pay for such a program. We know that roads are assets that need to be taken care of, to be maintained. We know that the cost of deferred maintenance far exceeds the cost of preventive maintenance. And we know that our neglect will place future residents in financial jeopardy if we don't begin to take care of our infrastructure system. Over the past year, we looked at a variety of funding options, which started with the possibility of budget cuts, which are included in this budget proposal that is before you. We cut personnel and expenses in a wide variety of departments, but as all of you know, we were also challenged with new and unforeseen increases due, for example, to the loss of inmate labor, which is going to cost us more than $250,000 of new money a year to fund a minimally acceptable replacement program, a decision that was made by a bureaucracy in Columbia with little or no regard to the consequences to all of us. We learned about healthcare increases to the tune of $260,000, and that's after asking our employees to take an increase of 20% in their healthcare costs. And we answered the concerns raised by members of this council to finally fully fund up depreciation accounts, which has been a request by council members in the past, which is going to cost us over $120,000 of new money every year, so that when buildings need to be, heating systems, for example, need to be replaced, vehicles need to be replaced, that we've set aside sufficient money to fund those annual needs. We were also asked by more than a few, for example, why we don't use the hospitality tax for roads since it is a tax that has been passed and used by residents, our roads are used by residents and visitors alike, why not use the hospitality tax that is paid for by both our residents and our visitors? And the answer to that question is that's exactly what we're proposing to do. But the hospitality tax can only be used on roads that benefit visitors, and that is why we are proposing to use a portion of the hospitality tax for new roads coming into the city that actually would benefit our city's visitors. We also looked around at our sister communities to see how they've funded their roads programs, and we came up with the same one ultimately that is before you, that our county has been using since 1992, a roads maintenance fee. We need to fix our roads before their neglect leads us to financial chaos. Quite frankly, many have asked a simple question. Why haven't we implemented a roads program years ago? And why haven't we implemented a comprehensive infrastructure program years ago in Aiken? Truth is, I don't know. I don't know what the answer to that question is. But that does not excuse us from acting now. We've talked about the issue, these issues, for a year. The sentiment has been that we should take up this issue at budget time. I hope that all of you will agree that it is time to implement a roads program in the city of Aiken. While the cost of implementation is significant, the cost to defer yet again is even more. Mr. Mayor, the can has been kicked long enough. If not now, then when?
Thank you, Mr. Clem. We'll open up comments from our audience. If you'll raise your hand, I'll recognize you, and please come up, state your name and address.
Tom. I'm Dave Malbyer, I live at 5 White Marsh Drive. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for giving me this opportunity to speak with you. I am concerned about the aggressive nature of the tax increases that you are proposing. I certainly don't object to them, but what I am objecting to is the fact that there are a number of groups of people within the city that are slipping through the cracks and are not carrying their fair share of the tax burden. Specifically, I'm talking about two groups. One is the people that live in the donut holes. I know they were not created by you, they've been here for a long time, but I think it's time for those to be closed. Those people say they don't want to live in the city, but what they really mean is they don't want to pay city taxes. If they didn't want to live in the city, they would have moved a long time ago. The road tax is a perfect example of a tax that's going to benefit them, but they will provide no support whatsoever. The state recognized, the legislature recognized this problem many years ago, and as I recall, gave you the authority to close that loophole and stop those donut holes, and it's just a matter of you exercising that authority. So I think that should be done. The second group are a number of people that live in South Carolina, live in the state and city, but fail to register their vehicles here. They do so because there is a relatively high tax on the vehicles, and they know they can avoid the tax by not registering their vehicles, and they simply get away with it. I saw this begin to develop when I worked at the center of site in 1989, it was a change in contract, a lot of new people came to town, some of them quite brazen, and they did not register their vehicles. The problem has only gotten worse since then. I rode through two apartment complexes last week and counted 188 cars that were registered in South Carolina. In addition to that, I counted 27 vehicles that were registered out of state. That's more than 14%. That's a significant number, and I do not believe that all of those are visitors. They are people who know exactly what they're doing, and they're avoiding the tax by avoiding the being in the base. You may say that that's not in your bellywreck or out of your preview, but I don't think that's the case because it affects the tax base. And secondly, as I understand it, the city police have the authority to enforce that law, and it's just a matter of you all telling the police to enforce it. And I think the problem could be solved very easily because, as I understand it, there is a rather high penalty for failing to register. And all you have to do is apply that maximum penalty to the brazen cases, and I think that problem would solve itself. My point is that you've really taken the easy route so far, in that you're taxing the people that are willing to pay. And I don't have any problem with the road tax. I don't have any problem with increasing the benefits in the city and improving the infrastructure, and I don't think many people do. It's just that we want to see a fairness, and we know that there are a number of people that are avoiding the tax base, and you all have the power to change that. You can do it, it just takes your willpower to do it. Consequently, what I am suggesting, to put some pressure on you, is that you not implement any new taxes until you really bite the bullet and go after these freeloaders, and that's exactly what they are, they're freeloaders, they're benefiting from the city and not willing to pay the taxes. That would be a great service to the people in the city and to the county and to the state. I thank you for listening.
Thanks, Mr. Malbyer, appreciate those comments.
Okay.
Yes, sir, just state your name and your address.
I'm Tom Thomas, and I've lived on top of Calumia Hill for 49 and a half years. I haven't been down here in about 15 or 18 years, I still see a couple people on here. Still got the after effects of open heart surgery, so if I start coughing and just run out of air and walk away, you'll know what happened. I came to Aiken eating 50 or 51, and no, myself nor anybody in my family never worked out at the, quote, bomb plant, SRS, whatever, but I can remember there was only one restaurant in town that you could get a meal on Sunday morning, and that was right over here where Homeless Jitters was for about 30 or 40 years. Mayor Weeks did a great job, as I'm sure Rick will, but we had a guy by the name of Roland Wyndham, that was our city manager, that came in here from Rock Hill, I think, and they pretty much ran the city. Proper protocol says if you're gonna say something derogatory about a situation or an individual, you need to say with all due respect, but I'm gonna forego that.
It would probably be better if we just kept it to the issue and not individuals.
Sorry.
I said, we'll try to keep it to the...
I'm keeping it to the issue, not individuals. I want to address our city manager. This tax, you know, I've done budgets for 40 years. I had a fracture down in Nairobi, Kenya, I had a guy from MIT, he came in and he could always identify the problem, but he could never solve the problem. He was a master, he had stacks of problems, but he could always identify them. A conservative budget is one that you take the money that you've got, and then you match it to, in a conservative manner, if you match it to what you have to do. You don't set up an objective and go out and start trying to chip away monies. The 40 bucks wouldn't bother me one way or the other. I just don't think, I think this is a regressive tax, and I think it was, you know, a tax that was just an added-on tax, and I don't think it's appropriate. You know, you'll have something else going, you know, with all these little white pickups running around, why didn't somebody get a half-load of coal asphalt and start passing some of these potholes? It's just, I think it's, I think you can find a different way to approach a conservative budget. See ya.
Thank you, Tom. Lane?
Before I get started on my comments, the question I have is that the vehicle fee and the franchise fees are going towards the roads project, correct? Is that correct? Okay. So, by the way, my name is Lane Bradford, I live in the county, but between my father and myself...
Stand by a minute, no, that's not correct. The franchise tax fee could go to the roads, building new roads, but it can also be used for other purposes. I think the city manager has outlined three...
I'm sorry, I want to apologize, I couldn't hear your question, I would have responded. My question is, is the vehicle fee and the franchise fee all tied together for roads?
Well, the vehicle maintenance, the maintenance fee is for the repair of existing city roads.
Okay.
It's simply to fund the maintenance program for the roads that we now have. The franchise fee, the proposal for the franchise fee is to construct new roads. For example, there are several proposals to significantly alleviate the traffic on Whiskey Road, and so, but you asked the question, is it only for roads? The program design is for roads and infrastructure, which might mean sidewalks, bike paths, or anything else the council decides that is part of the roads program. So one's kind of existing roads, and then the other is new infrastructure.
Then I'd like to hold my comments till we get to the franchise fees, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Lane. You have other comments from the audience? Yes, sir. Just state your name and address, please.
Hi, Nick Ingles, and I live in Alfred Street. A couple comments and questions, but the maintenance fee, I'm all for putting you guys forward to put together a progressive plan to fix the roads, which there definitely need maintenance, and I assume that they're gonna go towards a lot of thoroughfare roads, the main roads, such as York, Whiskey, Pine Long, the main roads such as those. But on my particular condition, I don't live on a city-owned road, I live on a state-maintained road, and when I pay this fee, I want to make sure that I'm getting the most bang for my buck, sort of, but if there is a condition that arises where everyone agrees that a not-city-maintained road needs to be maintained, the state isn't doing a well job of it, could it be theoretically used for those conditions, or is the state strictly disobey that rule?
It would, it would be used for city roads, and I would just say York and Whiskey was the two roads, those are not city-maintained roads.
They're not?
No, those are state roads.
Because it can only be used for city roads.
And only city roads, you couldn't ever use to fix a state-maintained road?
Oh.
Yeah.
I just wanted you to understand that.
Yeah, yeah, it's frustrating, I don't want, if I'm paying, I don't want to get use out of it. And then the other question I had is, it wasn't exactly clear, but is this applied to all titled vehicles or just primary vehicles and not recreational vehicles that are titled?
It'd be all titled.
All registered, all cars with the license plate.
It's the exact program that you already have in the county.
Right, right. Yeah, I know, in the county, recreational vehicles, you do have to pay a maintenance tax, but the percentage tax is lower on recreation vehicles than it is on those, which in my case, I'd be paying for four titles.
You're talking about a tag?
Your vehicle maintenance fee would be the same.
Right. Yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Nick, appreciate it.
I don't know if he heard you, we're talking about a tag instead of the...
Tax, yeah.
Did you hear that statement?
Nick, you understood it was a tag, the tag, not the tax on...
Right.
I said, I was on the tag. Other comments from the audience? Yes, sir. Good evening, just state your name and address, if you would, sir.
My name is Mackie Walker, live at 530 Whiskey Road, and I just wanted to say that while I'm not exactly thrilled about the $20 tax, I do support it and hope that it'll go quickly and aggressively to build it and repairing the roads and taking care of the infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Any other comments from the audience? Comments from council?
I've had so many different conversations in the last few days with families, as a matter of fact, some have been calling my home phone and expressing their concern. I also had someone to come by my place of employment today, and the three family types that I've had discussion with was one, the elderly population, they were worried because they are on fixed incomes, and young families that are just starting out, having to have two vehicles, both working, both need a vehicle, and having to pay the fee for each vehicle, and already struggling. And then the other type was the families that have two vehicles for the husband and wife, and then to have a teenager there in the home, that they are trying to teach responsibility, and having to get an additional vehicle and pay that fee on that as well. I'm not against a fee, I know that we have to be proactive, I was just concerned that might be a little bit too much for the number of vehicles that a family has, for those who have three vehicles, that could present a hardship. But I know we are tired of, all tired of traveling on crumbling roads, and just the thought of them getting any worse concerns all of us.
Thank you, Councilman Diggs. Any other comments from council?
I have two. Chief Bronco, could you explain for us and for the public, the rule on out-of-state plates? Somebody comes here, they're gonna work temporarily, they intend to go back to their home state, which is not South Carolina, are they still required to register their vehicle in South Carolina?
The answer is yes and no, there's so many factors that go into that if this is not your primary residence. However, there is a program that the county does go through neighborhoods, goes through apartment complexes to identify these areas that the gentleman addressed earlier, and we do enforce this law on a regular basis when we come in contact with people, maybe accidents or maybe a different, maybe traffic citation or something to that effect.
I think his suggestion was to be more, for Aiken public safety to be more proactive and go into the parking lots and go into the neighborhoods, and when you see an out-of-state plate, maybe take a note, and if it's still there, look at it, because again, I think his point is well-taken, it's just not fair.
His point also about the donut holes and those things, all of which we're on the way to addressing, but it's all, all part of it, too.
Can we go over the exemptions? I see that there are some exemptions.
I'm gonna ask attorney to go to that with you.
Ms. Diggs, if I may?
Yes.
The language that is in there with those exemptions tracks verbatim the language in the county fee, and just to keep it consistent with people who are already paying it in the county, I wanted to make sure that the same exemptions apply to the city that apply in the county. So that's why it's drafted that way.
Does everyone in the audience have a copy of this, or are they familiar?
The exemptions apply to antique cars that are exempt from the payment of the road maintenance fee, and it also goes into detail about a wartime disabled veteran who may be entitled to compensation for the loss of legs and arms and that sort of thing. It goes into more detail than that, but those are really the two exemptions that apply to the fee.
The other question I had, and I've had it from several people, I can't believe all of us have had that question, why don't we call it a vehicle maintenance tax?
Yeah, road maintenance tax.
Call it whatever it is, but let's just get the word tax in there, because that's what it is. Any reason we can't call it a road maintenance tax?
Well, the state statute authorizes council to charge a road maintenance fee. Maybe splitting hairs, but that's what the state statute says. It doesn't say tax, it says fee.
Okay, so your view is we cannot call it a road maintenance tax?
The state statute does not allow you to charge a road maintenance tax.
Okay.
It has to do with income taxes, a fee is not deductible in most cases in the taxes.
Any other comments or questions from council?
And the state law does require the fee to be applied to specifically the maintenance of roads.
But it goes to the income tax of the person, or businesses, on deductibility.
And I would say finally, that we ought to make an effort, not anytime soon, because the county has its own budget issues, but we ought to make an effort to recognize that they're taking a lot of money from city residents, and it's not coming back, it's staying in the county for maintenance of county roads. There's only two miles of county roads in the city limits. Fairness would dictate that they provide some of that money, which is about almost half a million dollars, to the city. So it's a process that may take several years to get done, but we ought to start the process of at least asking for fairness, and some of that money that we provide to the county to be returned to the city.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
First, as you all know, and as the public knows, I voted against this and the franchise fee increase on first reading, and I'm prepared to vote against both on second reading, although I think there's some credit that should be given to our city manager, and mayor, and others, for taking the bull by the horns on something that is an absolute responsibility that this city has. This is not an optional thing, it's an obligation. If we don't, if we didn't know that before, we certainly had that front and center during the discussions about the Jim Lake's extension roads problems. This is not something that we can sweep under the rug or avoid. I don't happen to agree with the method of funding, I think this is a, maybe a more regressive tax than I'm comfortable with. I think it's, this and the franchise fee hit hardest on those people who might be least able to accommodate it, or swallow it. As most know, I had favored the hospitality tax, I saw it as an entirely different thing, mostly funded by people that are non-city residents, and entirely discretionary level of tax payment versus this, where everybody that turns on a furnace in the winter, or needs a car to get to the grocery store, ends up paying the same amount regardless of what kind of car they drive, and especially those people who might be retired, or that live at home all day long, and have to run that heater, or air conditioner, or lights, or whatever it is all day long, you know, it just seems to hit them hardest. So while I will zealously defend the priorities that this council has placed on these tax, on these fee increases, and I think it's taken courage from all of council, and from the city manager to initiate it, I don't agree with the particular funding methods, so I still plan to vote against it, but I do say that taking responsibility for what we are responsible for is the right thing to do.
Thank you, council, Councilwoman Mary. Any other comments from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I will tell you that I struggle with this, and several folks in the public, and my colleagues on council, know that I struggle with this proposed increase, both with the franchise fee and this $20 fee. I've received calls from individuals that are opposed to it, and in my asking for options, whatever option I presented, it was rejected, whether it was decreasing it to $15, $10, they wanted no fee. And I've sat here longer than anyone here on council, John, and part of the process of kicking the can down the road. And meanwhile, our roads continue to get in worse state. I don't mind telling you, I'm up for reelection next year. And as a person that's up for reelection, I can do the things that I'm pushed to do, and say, I'm not going to support this, because the voters will not support me if I don't go along with this increase. But that would not be the right thing to do, that's what many have done over the years, kicking the can down the road. I've talked with folks who have told me their cars have gotten out of line, they busted tires, and you have to assume the cost of a busted tire on a bad road, and your car needing realignment, and look at the factors that are involved there. So with that, I am not going to kick the can down the road. I'll get some, I know, comments, more comments about it, but I will support this $20 increase, and I will support the franchise fee.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price. Any further comments? All those in favor, begin to reread this as second reading of a public hearing of an ordinance establishing a vehicle maintenance fee for the city of Aiken, and ordinance amending the Aiken City Code to establish the road maintenance fee. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That's Councilwoman Price, Councilman Hamoki, Councilman DeWarr, Councilman Edner, and the mayor, all those, and Councilman Diggs, all those opposed? Councilman Price, sorry. Mary, Councilwoman Mary, thank you, and it passes.
You've been called, Mitch.
Oh, heck, yeah.
Thank you, council. Number two, under Old Business, this is the second reading of a public hearing of an ordinance amending the franchise agreement with Aiken Electrical Cooperative. By title, this is an ordinance amending ordinance number 020899A to increase the franchise fee owed by Aiken Electric Cooperative. Is there a motion?
I still have.
You have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Want a second? Thank you. Comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, as you know, through numerous discussions that we've had in public workshops over the past few months, the second part of our budget proposals include a request for funding for what we call the Transportation and Public Safety Improvement Program. It's very clear, and talking about some of our community needs, that there are opportunities out there with no funding for the construction of new roads, for example, to alleviate traffic congestion. In terms of the issues that we've all heard about over the last year, litter being one, road maintenance and infrastructure being another, traffic congestion is an issue that we continue to hear about in Aiken, and very specifically surrounding the Whiskey Road corridor. We've also had many requests from citizens to consider putting in sidewalks, to ensure the safety of our youngsters walking in the neighborhood. There's been a big push in terms of where we're headed towards the future for bike paths and walking trails. There's been very strong interest in continuing our program of undergrounding utilities. And the truth is, is while all of those are fine and needed, there's no funding source to tackle any of them. The truth is, is out of all of those things that I mentioned, and that's only the transportation part of the program, the other's the public safety part of the program, and sidewalks certainly would be included in that, but we also know, although we don't know what the answer is yet, that we're going to be facing a major request for funding to deal with a antiquated, and quite frankly, embarrassing facility that we call our Department of Public Safety Headquarters. Doesn't meet code, doesn't meet requirements, isn't meeting the department's needs today, never mind 10 or 15 years into the future. And so we know that there's going to be requests for funding to undertake a major rehab and/or the building of a new facility, whatever this council decides is in the citizen's best interest. So this Transportation and Public Safety Program was designed to address those. Now, we have been slow to respond to requests for issues such as sidewalks, bike paths, undergrounding utilities, and the like. The one that truthfully is of greatest concern is the lack of funding to significantly alleviate some of our traffic congestion problems in the city. And the problem with that is that if we wait too long, the options that now exist to acquire land, to work with property owners, to get some roads built, will be foreclosed. We know that as the economy and the marketplace return to, each and every year, that there'll be greater and greater pressure to develop land, remaining land, that now is available for the possibility of road construction. So the truth is, is that if we don't act on a funding source to construct several major roads, the possibility will probably be foreclosed. And we know that, not by just looking into our crystal ball, we know that by talking to the landowners, property owners that are willing to work with us, but are at a point with the return of our economy, that there's people knocking on their doors, and decisions will be made if the city doesn't act. My point to you is that I don't think as a city, we want to be in a position where, for the next 30 years, people remind us on a weekly basis, you know, if we had just worked with certain property owners, we could have dealt with the issue of traffic congestion. Our traffic engineers tell us that we could be looking at an impact of a reduction of up to 30% of the traffic on Whiskey Road, and some of you may think that Whiskey Road needs to be attended to, and some of you may not. The fact is, with the growth that continues along that corridor, there is reason to believe that if you don't think Whiskey Road has a problem, wait five or 10 years, and ask yourself whether there's a problem. And the truth is, is that there are a lot of other communities that we could have pointed to. As a matter of fact, it's rather remarkable that there are actually still options for us to pursue, because usually what I'm used to, is that by the time the community and the elected officials and staff, and our residents, reach a point of making a decision that a certain corridor is so bad that it deserves and needs attention, that all of the potential options have been foreclosed. Remarkably, I think, in Aiken, there's still some opportunities to make a significant difference. And so that's why this is being proposed. I know that the council has been informed, some of the information is still protected in executive session, because we're dealing with negotiations with landowners, but that's the purpose of the Transportation and Public Safety Improvement Program, to try to be more responsive to our citizens that are asking for sidewalks and bike paths and underground utilities, and asking us to do something about some of our major corridors where traffic congestion and safety, quite frankly, is becoming an issue. We have here, as I've mentioned, a Mr. Tool, who can't get into the specifics of the land or the roads, but could talk in a general sense, if anyone has a question in that regard. But that is the purpose of the Transportation and Public Safety Improvement Program, and we ask you to consider that this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Clem. Will open up for comments from the audience at this time?
Well, I'm back again. My name is Lane Bradford, I actually live in the county, but between my father and myself and other family members, we own quite a few pieces of parcels inside the city. In addition to that, him and I also own an Aiken counseling group together. And, you know, I'm going to hit on a few different points here, but the first one is that, you know, there was a talk about, well, if we add this franchise fees on, it'll just kind of work its way down to the customers, or the people that are using it. We have not received an increase in reimbursements from Medicaid or Medicare in over four years, okay? And I really cannot pass a cost on. Somebody may say, well, it's only 2%, you know, it's not much. But for our building that we're located in, that would equillate out to $4,600 a year extra that we're going to be paying in. And we're not getting any more money from any other sources, we're stuck with what we have. So it really kind of tightens things in for us, and makes us work, you know? We hope we can keep on working, you know, if the fees keep on going up. There's been a lot of fees and taxes that have been presented by council lately, you know, we have the hospitality tax, and, you know, it gets to the point where you say, how much more can we keep on taking? I mean, how much more? You know, we're talking about wanting to bring young professionals in, we want to bring businesses in. Well, you know, a business looking to come into the city has a business property tax, then they've got now this additional 2% on top of that, and it just keeps adding up. And you have to sit back at some point and say, does it make sense to put my business in the city, or does it make sense to put it in the county? It's something that, you know, I think as we keep on adding these fees and taxes that we need to really kind of consider. The question I've got for you is, the capital improvement funds, the 1% for that, why are we not looking at using that for these projects, instead of adding another 2% on to the utility bills? And when you add 2% on to the utility bills, you're affecting everyone, business owners, people that are having, you know, that are strapped, people that are on fixed incomes. You know, the other issue I've got with this tax or these fees, is that, you know, it's not really laid out exactly, you know, Mr. Clem, you talked about where they'd be used for, but, you know, I remember when we talked about the hospitality tax, there was talk about, you know, and we were told, we're going to give new businesses, you know, a rebate on their licensing fee. You know, it was somebody that said, 100% first year, 75 the second, 50 the third. I called the licensing department today, and I said, so where do we stand on that? And they said, well, we didn't want to really, you know, council has a lot going on, so we sent it to a subcommittee, and it stayed in committee, it hasn't came out. And I says, is there any plan for that to come out? He says, no, not at this time. And that was part of what the hospitality tax was sold as, you know, we were going to help businesses, and other things along those lines. And now we're finding out that that's not really the case, it's never went anywhere. And, you know, we talked about having a couple of meetings for people to have input on this, and I read the standard every day, and I looked on the city's website, and I did not see any informational meetings. I saw the meeting about the budget, where it was talked about at that point, but not even meetings for really citizens to come say, I'm for this, I'm against this, here's why. And I think it'd be prudent, you know, for council to maybe hold off on this vote, have a couple of meetings for the constituents of Aiken to come say why they're for this, or why they're against this. I mean, we tend to kind of rush into these fees and taxes, it feels like, you know, we did, and I hate to keep on going back to hospitality tax, but we did that, but there really wasn't a list of what was going to be, what a prepared food was. And I was the one that was at Fresh Market that bought tea bags and got charged a hospitality tax on a tea bag, you know? And that was before the list was put up on the site, saying, here's what it's for, here's what you can charge, and what you cannot charge. So I think, you know, it'd be really good for council to sit down and say, okay, here's the exact projects we want to do with this franchise fees, here's how much they're going to cost, very much like the capital improvements, where you guys say, here is what we're going to do, this is how much it's going to cost. And, you know, going back to the capital improvements, I'm a little concerned that it may not, it may have some resistance when it comes up for a vote again. People are feeling like you're taxing here, there, nickel and dime, nickel and dime, nickel and dime, and it eventually becomes a whole dollar. So, you know, maybe instead of rushing into this, sitting down and actually putting together a plan, posting on the website, having some meetings, saying, this is exactly what we're going to use the money for, it won't be used for anything over here or over here, this is what we're going to use it for. And that way, we kind of know the 2%, where it's going, how it's going to be spent, and there's some accountability. I mean, I do have to admit that I was very upset today when I talked to the business license people, that, you know, that was never acted upon, and that was one thing that, as I said, council did say was going to be in there.
Let me explain what happened on that, and whether you realize it or not, I did not support the hospitality tax. I agree with a couple of your comments, I felt it was rushed, and we should have taken more time and been more deliberate. We did, and that was, that was a reason given for passing of the hospitality tax. When we sat down, I couldn't come up with anything fair. I chaired the Finance and Administration Committee, I can't come up with a fair, fair way to put in a business license tax rebate that we have the money for, number one, and it would be fair to existing businesses. I mean, if you, if you've got a business, and all of a sudden, a competitor moves next door, that business gets a benefit from the government, and the business that's been there doesn't.
Right.
Right.
I mean, there's just no fair, we're, in my mind, there was no fair way to do that. And that's why we, we didn't do anything with it. If, if council can give me some ideas on something that would pass, I'd be more than happy to bring it back to council. But, and again, in my mind, my personal mind, I, I, I don't think we should have mentioned a business license rebate. I didn't like it from the get-go. I just couldn't, could not see how it could be done and be fair.
And I agree with you. For businesses that have been here for some time, it was kind of slated towards that. But it was presented as part of, you know, the program on to get that tax passed. And now, all of a sudden, it's gone. Nobody, nobody wants to touch it at all.
And, and as was the garage at the time. But please keep in mind that the business, in defense, the hospitality tax is online, it's, the amount of money we get in is posted online on a monthly basis, and what we do with it is posted.
Right.
And we can only spend it in accordance with the law. And that's what we're doing.
And I agree with you on that. You know, but as I said, you know, that was part of the sale.
Yes.
You know, it was part of the sale, and now that part of the sale's not there. You know?
Absolutely right.
I remember back in the days when we had the hospitality tax before this new one, and it was said, if we pass capital improvements, we'll get rid of the hospitality tax. And then council brought the hospitality tax back. You know, we were told we're going to be getting-
Not so sure we won't be doing that again.
Yeah. You know, we were told we're going to be getting a benefit as business owners, and we're not getting a benefit.
Let's hone this back down into the, this issue, though, with the-
Yeah. So, you know, kind of going forward, you know, these fees do not attract businesses or young professionals to move into the city. And I think it really would behoove council to sit back, lay this out a little bit better, present it in a couple of open forums before the vote is taken on this and it's pushed through. You know, somebody talked about the donut holes a little bit earlier, and we talked about the car tax, you know, car fees. You know, a question I've got for you is, if this keeps going and going and going, is there a way for somebody to annex themselves out of the city? You know, because you're paying taxes, you know, county taxes, city taxes, you know, you've got all these different ones coming on. And, and that's the question I've got, is, is there a way for somebody to annex out of the city if this keeps on going? And I think that's something that council needs to really think about, you know? You, you can only bleed the pig for so long. And, and, you know, we're really starting to feel the pressure. So, I would implore council to please put this out, have some informational meetings, clearly lay out where the money's going to go, and so that we know that this is what it's going to be. Not that we have things that, you know, if you pass this, we're going to do this, but then it never comes to fruition. So, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Lane. Any other comments from the audience? Comments from council? All right. This is second reading in public hearing, an ordinance amending the franchise agreement with Aiken Electric Co-op. Again, the, by title, an ordinance amending ordinance number 020899A to increase the franchise fee owned by Aiken Electric Cooperative. All those in favor, second reading? That's Councilman Price, Councilman Hamoki, Councilwoman Diggs, Councilman Duarte, Councilman Ebner, the mayor for, all those opposed. Councilman Mary, thank you. Moving down to number three. This is second reading in public hearing of an ordinance amending the franchise fee for South Carolina Electric and Gas Company. By title, an ordinance amending the franchise fee for South Carolina Electric and Gas Company. Sounds like the same thing, doesn't it? Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. I know it's similar comments, so. Any comments from the audience? Comments from council? All those in favor, raise your hand. Councilwoman Price, Councilman Hamoki, Councilman Duarte, Councilman Ebner, the mayor for, all those opposed. Councilman Mary, thank you. Number four, Under Old Business. This is second reading, public hearing of an ordinance to set the millage rate for fiscal year 2016 and 17. By title, an ordinance to provide the levy of taxes for, for ordinary city purposes in the city of Aiken for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, set the millage at 62 mills, and to provide for the expenditures thereof. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, every year, the Aiken City Council adopts a budget for the following fiscal year. By a separate ordinance, council sets a millage rate to ensure proper revenue to meet anticipated budget expenditures. Based upon the information we have at this time, we are prepared to proceed with continuing our millage rate at 62 mills. The amount that we can adjust our millage rate is governed by state law. At this time, the value of a mill is $167,010, which is 37.7% of the general fund. City Council approved this ordinance on first reading at the special meeting on June 6, 2016. The City Council consideration is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to set the fiscal year 2016, 17 millage rate at 62 mills, which is the present rate.
Thank you, Mr. Clem. And that is the present rate, correct?
Yes.
Any comments from the audience? Comments from council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like for Mr. Beidenbach to show a, a graph that I had made up a couple of years ago. It's, it reflects not only the city finances, but there've been a number of comments about the people, how it affects, the effect is the same, is the same ratio, if you will. This came from the previous city manager. Move a little bit to the, yeah. And you can see from 2008 forward, there were, there were no tax increases, and of course, the hospitality tax was last year, and then we have the two taxes this year. You can see the blue line, and then you see the red line is a 2%, is a 2% inflation rate. And you can argue it up or down, but the lines just get further apart, and that affects all of us that are sitting in the room, and all the citizens, really not beyond the, the city of Aiken. So, I just wanted to point this out. This is what is occurring in the city. This is what occurs to our own personal budgets. So, that's, this is for information for what it's worth.
Thank you, Councilman Ebner. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Any other comments from council?
I don't think you have, you don't have a motion left here. Did you already take the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, you did, okay. That's right. Steve second.
Just a point of clarification. If the assessments and appraisals go up, are we going to have to redo our budget sometime in December, you know, to accommodate either the up or down of the revenues?
You have to redo the millage rate because the law says you can't, cannot make a profit on reassessment.
I'll ask, I'll ask Kim, my finance director, to come up with. I think that's, she's going to say the same thing.
She's trained me.
Good evening, Ms. Abney.
Good evening. Yes, when we receive the information from the county this year, it is what we call a reassessment year, so the values will be changing. And at that point, we will look at the millage rate, and because of the way the state says we have to handle changes in the millage rate, we can't, we can't make more than what we are predicted to make, with the caveat that we can include a factor for inflation and the growth of the city population. But that, we don't have the information because we haven't received it from the county yet. I don't, don't believe they are done with their reassessment numbers yet. So, all we can do is maintain where we at and look at it.
Who determines the inflation that we can add?
The state.
State.
Bureau. They send us a letter from their Bureau of Statistics, and then we're bound by that.
But, Kim, that, that adjustment will be made by council, but it does not affect the citizen or what they pay. It'll still be at the same rate as last year, correct?
That's going to be up to council. You know, it depends on the assessment. So, obviously, some people's assessment could go up, some could go down, and then what council determines to do with the rate.
But the millage rate will be adjusted accordingly to what, what the state comes in?
We have to do what they call rollback, and then there is an opportunity to use the population growth and the inflation growth if council desires.
Okay.
But that's in the fall.
Thank you. Any other questions from Ms. Abney?
Yes, I don't know whether Kim can answer this or Stewart. Our millage rate has been the same, the 62 mills for 15?
Well, it's been reduced. So, it was 66 before the 2011 reassessment. We dropped it to 62. But we have not had an increase in over 25 years. I mean, I remember when I came to work, it was like 102, and then it went to 90, you know?
Right. And we have constantly reduced that millage rate, and I don't know that the public understands the impact of reducing that rate and what it's had on the long-term planning of our city and dollars to operate effectively our city with the road maintenance and all those other things, because we constantly, because of public input, reduced that rate to where it is right now, 62 mills from 100 and some odd mills.
Thank you, Kim. Any other comments from council?
Well, the only question I have is, I mean, why do we bother setting it if it's going to be determined that, you know, events are going to determine what the final millage rate's going to be anyway?
You have to.
Am I misunderstanding what she's just said?
No. I mean, I mean, the reason that we're doing it is because we are required by law to do it, to set, you have to set a tax rate, set a budget. That is adjusted in a, in a reevaluation year. So, the answer is, we are doing it because we are required by law to do it.
Okay. All right. Again, to restate it, this is an ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes for ordinary city purposes in the, in the city of Aiken for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, set the millage at 62 mills, and to provide for the expenditures thereof. All those in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Moving to number five, Under Old Business. This is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance adopting a budget proposed by the city manager containing estimates of proposed revenues and expenditures by the city of Aiken for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016, and ending June 30 of 2017, and declaring that it shall constitute the budget of the city of Aiken. Is there a motion?
I so moved.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a second, thank you. Comments from staff?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a few brief comments, and then acknowledge the presence of all of our major department heads here this evening that are ready to answer any additional questions that you may have. You are well aware that this is our, actually, our ninth meeting to discuss our budget. The first three dealt with the format of the budget itself, which hadn't changed in many decades. And we now have a format that is much more in accordance with the guidelines of the Government Finance Officers Association, which is the preeminent municipal budget entity in the, in the, in the country. As you know, the past year has been one of transition, with a new mayor and manager, and several new department managers. Every member of this city council has made it abundantly clear to me that you expect management reform and continuous improvement in better budget preparation and presentation. You have also introduced a new commitment to fund our significant infrastructure assets and complete major capital projects on time that have been long neglected. The city council, with the elections in November, got together and drafted a strategic plan and set priorities for us over the next several years. For many months, your staff has worked tirelessly to answer the many concerns that you have raised fundamentally about the budget format, which is a classic incremental budget with little change since the 1950s. I want and need to thank our management team of assistant managers, Stuart Beidenbo, finance director Kim Abney, city clerk Sarah Rideout, human resources director Alicia Davis, and risk manager Lex Kirkland, for their extraordinary help and assistance in preparing this budget. I also wanted to publicly thank the Aiken Planning Commission, with through their chair, Liz Stewart, and the dedicated members of the commission who offered us substantive input and recommendations on our capital plan. Their guidance and input were both appreciated and valued. Thanks to our dedicated staff, there are numerous major accomplishments that we have all witnessed over the past year, including being recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association once again, and receiving the award for excellence in financial reporting. We continue to implement our water meter change-out program. We have fairly radically changed financial operations and the use of credit cards, with the elimination of over 100 cards. As you know, through the leadership of Mr. Grinton, we have implemented a, purchased and implemented a software program that is assisting us in evaluating our infrastructure in the city. We received FEMA grant for the historic railroad soil stabilization project. We successfully negotiated a cell tower lease, bringing in over $24,000 a year. The downtown alley renovations are being completed as we speak. The Rye Patch Stables Project Phase 1 was completed. We acquired the site for our Northside Recreation Park and have begun the planning and design process for that project in accordance with the vote of our citizens. We've acquired a five-acre site adjacent to Eustace Park for our community center. We have been awarded a bid to extend Citizens Park Walking Trail. All projects that come from our capital project sales tax, all of which were approved by our citizens and our taxpayers. We've entered into discussions, as you know, with the new owners of the Aiken Mall, and hope that that project will bear fruit over the coming year. We competed and were awarded membership into the Main Streets Program to further improve our wonderful downtown area. We have retained a, a planning entity to assist our planning commission in their legislatively required rewriting of our comprehensive plan. This council, through your leadership, created a citizens review board to review complaints that are filed with our Department of Public Safety. Operational audits are underway, evaluating the Department of Public Safety and Public Services. We were awarded a $2 million grant from the Federal Aviation Administration to expand the terminal apron at our airport. We've installed sanitary and stormwater lines on Beatty Lane and Oak Grove Road, allowing for commercial development. We've upgraded storm sewer infrastructure on Olga Hit Lane, Fabian Drive, and Millbrook, allowing for several new businesses to develop on that section. As I've mentioned, we have fairly radically changed the format of our budget, and I would just like to say to our citizens, not only is the budget, and has, the budget is and has been on the website for citizen review for months, we will be putting on a, a section that allows for our citizens to offer a commentary about what is lacking or what they would like to see in next year's budget to even prove, approve the, the document even further. Some initiatives through the leadership of individual members of this council include, in next year's budget, a comprehensive review of our pension plan. Obviously, we all know that, that pension costs are a significant line item cost in our budget, and we believe we need to comprehensively review our city's pension system to not only take a fresh look at, at it, but also to compare it to other cities and towns across the country and entities in the private sector as well. We will continue our ongoing program to conduct operational audits under the philosophy that not, none of our departments are perfect, all are able to continuously improve, and I'm honored to say that that is the philosophy of every one of our senior managers. Next year, we'll be looking at finance and our human resource functions as well, and conducting the second part of our public services audit that'll look at the cost for us to transport, transport our waste, and whether there are cost-saving- our waste and whether there are cost savings measures that might be employed to reduce the costs to our residents and taxpayers. I've mentioned a project that's ongoing that is in need of immediate attention, and that's our headquarters at Public Safety. We know that we need to make a decision in that regard. We've all committed, to all of you, that we will complete capital project sales tax projects that have been languishing too long, starting with the Eustace Park Community Center, with the goal of getting that done in the next fiscal year. And I want to thank the council for your leadership in those issues. We want to complete the evaluation and ask the council to make an ultimate decision on the issue of City Hall. As you know, we own numerous parcels of land downtown. And it is my belief, as well as the belief of our management staff, that we can economize and we can ultimately sell off a property that we're now holding, putting it back into the private sector with a consolidation of City Hall functions. We want to reestablish the Public Works Department with all of the projected work in all of our major areas. We think a consolidated Public Works will increase efficiency and effectiveness. And that proposal is included in our budget. I've mentioned our discussions with the Aiken Mall and also implementation of the recommendations of our Main Street programs. That's just a brief summary of the budget. We're not asking for a millage increase, as was mentioned. Our department heads are here and more than glad to answer any additional concerns that you may have. I would just like to end by thanking every member of this council. I know how many hours and days and months that you've spent reviewing this document. I suspect that maybe our citizens aren't aware of how much time you put into things like that. But I just wanted to speak on behalf of our employees and sincerely thank all of you, every one of you, for the work that you do to push us to make this document the best budget that it can be. So, Mr. Mayor, I will leave it at that and offer our department heads up if there are any specific questions.
Thank you, Mr. Clem. And I'd take this opportunity to thank you, Mr. Beedenbaugh, Ms. Abney, of course, all of our department heads who are represented here also, the Planning Commission, and this council. I'll tell you, there were many meetings and probably even more questions as we shaped this document. But this is a budget that was shaped by everyone, by the input of this council and others, our citizens. And I hope that everyone takes the pride in this final product. It was a good process for council. And it's a budget that I'm proud that the staff has presented to us. So thank you for your efforts. And to our staff, thank you for all your efforts in this. And I'd open it up to the, to our audience for comments at this time. Okay. Comments from council?
I would just want to say what a delay that is to come out of the dark ages and look at a new budget and a new format. As many of you know, I would frequently come with a budget with a list of questions that would bore most of you. I finally stopped doing that and then dealt directly with the city manager. But I am really, really pleased with the format. We're not complete, and we'll probably finish it up next year. It's online. It tells everybody where we get our money, which is obviously from the taxpayers, and what we do with it. It's got clarity, and I hope people take the time to look at it. There's a lot of narrative, much more narrative than the last budget. The last budget was full of numbers and accounts and so forth. Some narrative, but not very much, nearly as much as we have with this budget. So I thank staff for their hard work. If I thought I would get support, I would make a motion to remove the unfunded mandate of thirteen thousand dollars that the state is asking us to pay. But in a couple of comments I've made in work sessions, I didn't get a sense that there would be a lot of support to remove that. But it frustrates, frustrates me no end for a higher level of government to say, "We want you to do this and not pay for it." But I won't beat up the state. There have been plenty of people beating them up. Well deserved, in my opinion. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Dohore. Any other comments from council?
I have a comment, Mr. Mayor. I do want to thank John, you, for your leadership and also your able staff. You have part of an old team and part of a new team, very good blend of team spirit, very obvious. And I want to commend them for their hours that they put in. One of the long-term concerns that I've had, it's still burning inside of me, is balanced growth. And certainly, there are tremendous opportunities ahead of us as you look east, west, and north. We're doing so well on the south side of town. And I don't, I know that we don't like to wear labels, but the fact is fact, the north side, the south side is doing very, very well in terms of growth. And if anyone know of any ideas that we can put into place, you have our business vitality person in the audience, visit his office, share his input, share your input. But we need some ideas, some innovative ideas in terms of how we can get the excitement going. I know we have two projects, but that's not enough. It's small businesses, diversity in those businesses that we're looking for. And we need ideas for the folks that are here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Price. All right. To restate the motion, this is an ordinance adopting a budget proposed by the city manager containing estimates of proposed revenues and expenditures by the City of Aiken for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and sixteen and ending June thirty, two thousand and seventeen, and declaring that it shall constitute the budget of the City of Aiken. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you. We've added on an item in way of information tonight. Do we have to present that?
Yes. The last item this evening deals with the ongoing Eustace Park issue. And there was inquiry made about the ongoing environmental cleanup or whatever. And so we've invited Joy Gillespie here, our staff person with an expert, an environmental expert who is here. So could both of you join us at the podium and give us the latest update? And then we certainly want to open it up to questions that the council may have. I believe it's Mr. Bartley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Chris Bartley with Terracotta. And we have been working on the due diligence for the Eustace Park project with Joy. So I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bartley.
Yes, I had several, and I think it was passed, I'm passed on to you.
Sure.
And I've had experience in my background of dealing with pumping chemical treat. And once whatever state you're in gets their claws in you, they don't go away. And I read your narrative on that about the brownfield. And I assume it'll come to council whenever we, if we decide to go that way, because it has some extenuating circumstances. My biggest concern was if we do go down that path, it does two things. One, it helps you in one way because it makes the liability within the property. And any chemicals that go downstream and there's health issues, the original owner, in this case, the school system, will probably be around a while.
Sure.
But the other caveat of that is, the new owner has to take care of whatever goes off-site. All right? And my concern is, if we do have to do something of the nature here, can we build on that property by that, a structure? And I'm not talking about a parking lot or something. I'm talking about the building we're proposing. Most times, that gets restricted. And I can point to the Charlotte and Richmond, Virginia, numerous other places where brownfields come on, they make good golf courses or that. But they won't let you build anything other than a little gazebo or something that's very removable. And here, we're talking a major building.
Well, so when we first started working on this project, we brought up the non-responsible party voluntary cleanup contract with DEHEC. And I would point out that it is, the key words are voluntary and non-responsible. So in the case of a non-responsible party, DEHEC does not require the prospective purchaser, in this case, of the city, to chase that off-site issue. That resides with the responsible party, who, as you pointed out, would be the school district. So in that aspect, you're really just confined to what you do. When we first had the initial conversations with DEHEC about approaching the state brownfields, so we're not sort of in the federal brownfields realm, they were actually excited about this project. This is the type of redevelopment that they like to see, the sort of, you know, return to a greenfield's use, as it were. So we told them what you want to do, and they've actually seen your plans, and they've seen the results as part of the application process. So they already know what you want to do. And our goal is to incorporate the redevelopment as it is planned to deal with the environmental issues at the property. So we don't have to, you know, do a whole lot of cleanup or anything like that.
And I understand the asbestos and lead paint, and council talked about that when we bought the property.
Certainly.
I still go back. If we go through this, and I'm all for cleaning it up, and we did this in this city where the Chamber of Commerce was, there's an old filling station, and we've done a couple others around town. And those are hydrocarbons, which are much easier to take care of. In this case, we got pesticides, and you can almost be assured it's the DDTs, 24Ds, and heptachlors and those type of chemicals. And they don't tend to deteriorate very fastly.
That's what makes them good pesticides.
So my real question, and maybe you don't have that in mind, can, if we go through this and agree to do the brownfield state site, if you will, versus federal, can we build a building on it?
Absolutely. It might actually help the termite bond. No, in all seriousness, what we can do is take those soils and put them underneath parking lots or buildings or things like that. Because the DX concern is physical contact with those soils. So the best place to put them is under buildings. So in our initial conversations with DEHEC, you know, they realized that we had some issues in soils. We can take those and move them under the building. And then, you know, we tell DEHEC as part of an ongoing site management plan, which will follow the property, "Hey, we know there's impacted soil underneath this building. As long as the building's there, we don't have to do anything about it." Or as long as the parking lot is there, it restricts physical access to the property. So that then becomes the cleanup, so to speak, of the actual voluntary cleanup program. It's an engineering control.
What I would suggest to Joy and to the city manager, you know, your statements you're making here about the use of buildings on there, I think is very important for future council needs. And Mr. Mayor had some of the similar questions, because he's had experience dealing with it, too. And obviously, we want to go down the right path, and I think it's the right thing to do. So that answers my question. And then, no, because we're due to close July first, I think.
Sooner or sooner.
Okay. And I guess the only other thing is the environmental issues. And if we can do what he's alluding to, I would support doing that. And Phil, you had some questions along the same line?
Yeah. I mean, I'd shared the same questions. I was particularly concerned about just the unknown. But I do think that the document most recently sent us, middle of last week, I guess, helped a lot about the voluntary cleanup, explained the voluntary cleanup program, and particularly the potentially waiver of liability, almost, for responsibility for that, by doing this as a voluntary cleanup project, that we relieve ourselves of the long-term liabilities related to it if we tried to take shortcuts right now. And, you know, I take what Mr. Abner had said to heart, that if we do find something with the further testing, that we, worst-case scenario, that we could leave that ground undisturbed or put it under a parking lot or something. I don't think I'd ever want to put a building over it, because fifteen, twenty-five years from now, the requirements are going to change for what to do with chemicals in the ground. And I don't want to have to tear a building down to fix it. But a parking lot or something like that might be reasonable to put over it if we do find a worst-case scenario situation. But receiving that, that explained the voluntary cleanup program and also the transfer of liability, so to speak, was, made a big difference. Because naturally, I was afraid of what we were obligating the taxpayers to have to swallow.
This is a unique program to DEHEC in that you're coming to DEHEC and asking for their help, and they're actually helping you. They can sometimes be an obstacle to work with. But this particular group, I work with them a lot for private developers. And this is a very popular program for private developers because of the tax incentives that are involved with that. The city can't take advantage of those. But this particular program moves, they move at the pace of business or as close to the pace of business as the state can. And they want to work and see projects be successful. They are not there to be an obstacle. They want to, they want this to be a success so people will continue to use them. If they were an obstacle, people wouldn't approach this program, you know, they wouldn't work with it. So I actually used to work for DEHEC.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Just for public clarification here, I'm here, sir.
Oh, sorry.
Joy, you were to talk with DEHEC. And DEHEC was doing a second testing. And that, another testing. At our last meeting, we talked about another test that they were doing. And it was not unusual for them to ask for a follow-up test.
Oh, so we did our Phase One and asbestos survey. That was the initial thing we did for the due diligence. Then we followed up with our initial testing, which was some soil and groundwater, and groundwater, ground penetrating radar. And then the additional testing is what DEHEC requires for participation in the program.
That was the key to me.
They won't, they won't complete that. We'll do that and send them those results.
And when is that going to be done?
We have to write a work plan that shows what we're going to do, submit it to them. They approve what we're going to do, and then we go out and take the sampling.
And if I might, the significance of that, because that was what was so profound to me, I made the statement in work session that you do a Phase One, so you don't have to do a Phase Two. But as a result of Phase One, if you suddenly find yourself obligated to do a Phase Two, you do that. And if you are asked by DEHEC to go further, I commented that it meant that there was something to be afraid of. There was something in ground or whatever. What I learned from that document that y'all sent was that this, in order to participate in the voluntary cleanup program, that this level of testing beyond the regular Phase Two protocol was a voluntary thing. It wasn't prescribed by DEHEC as a result of any particular findings or any particular existence of anything in the ground. But having known what the site had been used for and participated in this voluntary cleanup program, it was a voluntary step beyond Phase Two, not a mandated step beyond Phase Two.
One of the issues that DEHEC was having years ago, before the brownfields laws really came into effect, was when you did that Phase Two, and it didn't fit into any, you know, box at DEHEC, any regulatory program, they weren't sure what to do with it. So it just kind of hung out there. And if you did some kind of cleanup, you may do it to your own satisfaction, but nobody was ever buying off on it. So this gives a mechanism to get some state buy-off from it, from DEHEC, so that, you know, they're involved in the process of what you're assessing, what you're cleaning up, and the ultimate remedies that you put in place.
That was the key to me, was that piece.
So the bottom line is that we're working on having a clean site to place this facility on, barring the fact that part of the property will be undisturbed.
Or placed under some sort of engineering control. Correct. So everything that we do from an assessment and remedy standpoint will be with the end use in mind to minimize anybody's potential exposure to that. For example, groundwater, we know, we've studied groundwater. There's very minimal impact in the areas that we've studied. We probably don't have to do anything to groundwater because it's forty feet out there. So as long as we don't put in a well and put in some kind of sprinkler that we all go and drink from, you know, there's not really anything to do. The risk is already there or already minimized, excuse me.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bartley.
I would, as I mentioned before to the city manager, if you have Ms. Gillespie, I think summarize a report, even though it's on the public record, I like it summarized about the use of building about the use of buildings in the program. That was much, as Mr. Mayor said, a very good explanation of what we can do. And of course, the liability was a big issue, too, but that seemed like that's mitigated. So, very good.
Thank you, Councilman Dorr.
May I ask, Councilman Mayor?
Yes, sir.
With those issues being addressed, is council comfortable with us going forward with the closing on this property? Is there any reason not to go ahead and do that?
I'm okay with it.
I think there's a consensus anyway.
Sorry?
I said, I thought we were going forward anyway.
Well, the school board is ready. We were waiting for council to have these concerns addressed. We're ready to do the closing.
I'm not clear as to who assumes liability a long term. No one?
I won't answer it.
We'll let Mr. Bartley come back up.
Yeah, he needs to answer that.
As I understand the document, you essentially get a clearance from DEHEC as far as liability goes for this particular site.
So, this is a...
The city does.
The city does.
The city does. This is a new, for lack of a better term, time zero in the environmental liability for this project. So, everything up to the point when you filled out the voluntary cleanup contract application, that liability is for the current owner and everybody who owned it prior to them. So, your liability, you're protected from all those past uses. Now, if, you know, if the city in 50 years goes out there and puts in a gas station or it becomes another maintenance shop, then you would be liable for anything that you did to the property. But anything from this point backwards is what you get the liability protection from. And that, those went into effect when you filled out the application, and they said, "Yes, you are a non-responsible party."
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bartley.
In the insurance world, we call that a retro date. And so, you're establishing a retro date of some contract date with DEHEC, and you're responsible for everything from that date forward.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Need a motion to adjourn?
Someone?
Motion and second. All those in favor, please stand up.